Welcome to the regular Cedar Falls City Council meeting this March 5, 2018. I'll now call this meeting to order and ask for a roll call from Madam Clerk, please.
Miller?
Here.
DeBoer?
Here.
Cruz?
Here.
Blanford?
Here.
Dara?
Here.
Whelan?
Here.
Green?
Here.
All members present, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, and just noting, Councilman Dara will be participating by phone, we hope. Item C is a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting February 19.
So moved. Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. I do have a proclamation for home rule to read briefly. It does read, "Whereas home rule is essential to effective and responsive municipal government in Iowa and provides flexibility to make decisions at the local level where decisions are made closest to the people they impact and can be tailored to fit local conditions, needs, and concerns in order to better serve taxpayers." Whereas the citizens of Iowa approved the adoption of home rule in the Constitution of Iowa on November 5, 1968, whereas this is the 50th year of municipal home rule in Iowa, and whereas home rule continues to be vital to the health and prosperity of all cities in Iowa, now therefore I, Jim Brown, Mayor of Cedar Falls, Iowa, do hereby recognize the 50th anniversary of municipal home rule in Iowa and proudly support its continued authority. Signed this 5th day of March, 2018. Moving on to item D, is there any agenda revisions, Madam Clerk?
I have no agenda revisions, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item E is special order of business. E1 is a public hearing on the proposed plans for the 2018 sanitary sewer rehabilitation project. Is there a motion to receive and file proof of publication?
So moved.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Any written objections filed with the city clerk?
I have no written objections on file, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Before we open for oral comments, I'll have, I believe, Mike Nyman's here from Water Reclamation to give us an update on this public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This rehabilitation is an annual project where we identify sanitary and storm lines that have issues such as cracks, holes, maybe root or water infiltration that could cause a failure in the line. This is a no-dig method of repairing these lines, so without excavating, this becomes a very cost-effective means to repair these lines and maintain the integrity of the city's infrastructure. This year, we identified approximately 40 lines or 8,500 feet throughout the city that are in need of repair.
Very good, thank you. I will open up for public oral comments on this public hearing. Hearing and seeing none, I declare the hearing closed. Item 2 is resolution approving and adopting the plans for the 2018 sewer project. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Any written objections filed with the city clerk?
I have no written objections on file, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Before we open for oral comments, I'll have, I believe, Mike Nyman's here from Water Reclamation to give us an update on this public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This rehabilitation is an annual project where we identify sanitary and storm lines that have issues such as cracks, holes, maybe root or water infiltration that could cause a failure in the line. This is a no-dig method of repairing these lines, so without excavating, this becomes a very cost-effective means to repair these lines and maintain the integrity of the city's infrastructure. This year, we identified approximately 40 lines or 8,500 feet throughout the city that are in need of repair.
Very good, thank you. I will open up for public oral comments on this public hearing. Hearing and seeing none, I declare the hearing closed. Item 2 is resolution approving and adopting the plans for the 2018 sewer project. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion second, any discussion from council? Requires roll call vote, please.
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item 3 is a public hearing and proposal to undertake a public improvement project for the Campus Street Bridge Replacement Project, and to authorize acquisition of private property for said project. Is there a motion to receive and file proof of publication?
So moved.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Aye.
Any written objections filed with the city clerk?
I have no written objections on file, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Once again, before all comments, I'll have our city engineer, John Wrestler, give us an update on this public hearing.
Sorry, little technical difficulty here.
Okay. Just make sure you hit the microphone when you're ready, John.
Well, it looks like our television crew is right on cue, and they've helped me out, and they've brought up the graphic that was attempting to ring up on the computer. So, just a quick summary, wanted to give the mayor and council an idea of the area we're talking about. It's part of, I guess, I don't know if it's technically part of the UNI campus, but it's very close. We're east of Hudson on Campus Drive. The existing box culvert has kind of run its course as far as life cycle, so it's kind of near the tower complex, and we would be replacing that this year. So if you look at the hatched area, those are the temporary easements that we are proposing for the construction of the box culvert. The area closer in is a permanent drainage easement for maintenance of that box culvert once it's constructed. Currently, we're planning on an April 24 letting. If all goes well, we are still in the process of reviewing the plans, and the tentative estimate for that will be $355,000. Any questions?
Thank you, John, appreciate it. We'll open up to the public for any public comment in the public hearing. Hearing and seeing none, declare the hearing closed. And item 4 is a resolution approving a public improvement for the Campus Street Bridge Replacement and authorizing acquisition of private property for said project. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion second, any further discussion from council? Requires roll call vote, please. Frank? Do we lose Frank? Any?
I'm sorry, aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item 5 is a hearing on a complaint issued to B&amp;B West for a first tobacco violation. Again, before all comments, have our, not our attorney, but our attorney representing the city, Robert Benbridge, speak on this particular hearing, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening to Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm Assistant City Attorney Bob Benbridge. This is the time and place set for a hearing on a complaint filed by the city for a first offense tobacco violation at B&amp;B West owned by Sarwar Corporation doing business at 3105 Hudson Road. On January 9 of this year, Cedar Falls Police Department did conduct a tobacco compliance check at this location, entering the business with an underage individual working with the police department requesting tobacco items. That individual has not asked for ID or asked her age and was sold tobacco. At this time, we would ask that the council approve and authorize a order assessing the penalty for a first offense tobacco violation.
Thank you, Bob. Also, open up for oral comments. Hearing and seeing none, moving on to item 6, is approve and authorize execution of an order assessing penalty relative to a first tobacco violation regarding B&amp;B West. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion from council? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 7 is a hearing on complaint issued to Great Wall for a first tobacco violation. Once again, you're up, I think, Bob.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, this is the time and place for a complaint filed by the city against tobacco licensee Great Wall doing business at 2125 West 22nd Street up on the College Hill area. Again, Cedar Falls PD on the same date, January 9 of 2018, conducted the tobacco compliance check, entered the location with an underage individual who requested tobacco products. They were not ID'd or asked their age and were sold tobacco products. So again, we would request the council approve and authorize the order assessing penalty for a first offense tobacco violation.
Thank you for that, Bob. We will also open it up for oral comments on this. Hearing and seeing none, move to item 8 is approve and authorize execution of an order assessing penalty relative to a first tobacco violation regarding Great Wall. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion second, any further discussion from council? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item F is old business. I plan on read the items and add that a motion and second is needed from the prevailing side as it relates to the original item that was being considered two weeks ago. I will read it as it states, "Reconsidering action taken relative to highway corridor and greenbelt overlay zoning district site plan for construction of a convenience store, gas station, and detached car wash at Pinnacle Prairie." Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to reconsider.
Second. Indeed, motion second by two in the prevailing side. Afterwards, I'll open it for comments to council as it relates to this reconsideration.
Yes, sir. I opened it up again because I'm interested in just what QuickStar is willing to do to satisfy some of the neighbors. It's called helping the character of the neighborhood, and I know it's a legal development for that particular area, and he has accomplished some objectives of supporting the neighborhood. But I was looking at the area of being able to somewhat make it less obtrusive to see lights in the nighttime, and I keep bringing up the example I have in Chicago where a very expensive house went right in between a Home Depot because the guy put a berm there and trees, and you can't see it. So if you can't see it, it isn't there. So I'm willing to listen a little bit and see what's going on.
Very good. Mr. Green?
Mr. Mayor, my reason to request a reconsideration is that in the last council meeting in 2019, I'd stated that my concerns for this project were the traffic at Green Hill and Main Street. And I was really surprised with the fairway vote that I was the lone no vote on that. And so I knew that with other council members having more experience and more time in their chairs, that probably there was possibly some information that I was missing. So I went back out just on my own to that intersection, spent about five hours out there. This was during peak times, and it was over the course of two days, on weekdays, Thursday and Friday morning two weeks ago, and then again on Sunday yesterday. And I just, I didn't see the level of traffic coming up from South Main up to Green Hill Road that I had seen back in August when I was canvassing that area. And I don't know what the difference is for why there was traffic back then and not as much now coming northward. So that being said, that reason that I had the concerns of the compounding traffic from 58 and the reconstruction of 58 and Viking, and then new developments, I just, I don't see it as much of an issue as I had before, to the point that it's something that we have to tie into for health, safety, and welfare for the residents. So I believe that we need to reconsider in order to see if that intersection is at the level of a dangerous intersection where council should intercede, and that's my only reason.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Anyone else from council? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Nay.
Frank, did you hear the motion? Do we have him?
Aye. I can hear something. Say aye here.
That motion does pass. It is now back to the original item as it was on the agenda. It already was motion and seconded two weeks ago. It'd be my strong suggestion to offer a tabling of this item so that more individuals can be made aware of when that specific date would come in terms of re-establishing that for a council meeting.
Motion to table, Mr. Mayor?
Motion table, is there a second?
Second.
The motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Nay.
Frank, did you hear the motion? Do we have him?
Aye. I can hear something. Say aye here.
That motion does pass. It is now back to the original item as it was on the agenda. It already was motion and seconded two weeks ago. It'd be my strong suggestion to offer a tabling of this item so that more individuals can be made aware of when that specific date would come in terms of re-establishing that for a council meeting.
Motion to table, Mr. Mayor?
Motion table, is there a second?
Second.
The motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Aye.
That motion does carry as well. Moving on to item 1, the consent calendar. The following items will be acted upon by a voice vote in a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or public requests an item be specifically considered separately. And if there was to be public input, we still have public comment at the end of the meeting. I should just make that aware. Maybe we should be there pretty soon. Is there someone from the council wishes to pull an item from the consent calendar? Anyone from the public? Hearing and seeing none, I will summarize the items in the consent calendar. First is to receive and file the resignation of Ishan Vaschpay as a member of the Human Rights Commission. I want to thank him for his service to the city. And item B is to approve the appointment of Evan Renfrew to the Library Board of Trustees. Again, appreciate the service and volunteering for the city. Item C is receive and file the committee of the whole minutes from February 19 relative to the interview of Mr. Renfrew on street parking, butchering, harvesting animals, recreation aquatics program, and bills and payroll. Item D is to approve and adopt the action taken at the committee of the whole of February 19 relative to the on-street parking regulations, butchering, harvesting animals. Item E is receive and file the city council work session minutes of February 26. F is receive and file departmental monthly reports of January 2018. G is approve a request for street closures for a downtown show and shine on May 6. H is approve and authorize execution of an order accepting settlement agreement relative to a first tobacco violation. And I is approve applications for permits and licenses. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Motion second, any further discussion from council? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 2 is a resolution calendar. These following items will be acted upon by a roll call vote in a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or the public requests an item to be pulled for that separate discussion. Is there any such requests from council? From the public? Hearing and seeing none, I'll summarize the resolution calendar. A through H are personnel items. Item I is approving and adopting the classification and compensation study relative to job classifications and pay grade allocations for certain employees of the city of Cedar Falls. J is a resolution approving and authorizing execution of an amendment to agreement for animal control services with the city of Waterloo. K is approving and authorizing execution of a grant agreement, the Blackhawk County Gaming Association, I believe for $50,000 relative to construction of pickleball courts. L is a resolution approving the work for street restoration project. M is approving the work for the Seal Coat project. N is approving the contract for the 2018 street construction project. O is a resolution approving funding for authorizing execution of an application for assistance to Blackhawk Soil and Water Conservation District for the University Avenue Bio Retention Cells. P is approving and authorizing execution of a form of contract for asbestos removal in conjunction with a nuisance abatement. Q is approving the Pinnacle Ridge minor plat. R is approving the preliminary plat of Gateway Business Park. S is a resolution setting March 19 as the date of public hearing to consider entering into proposed agreement for private development and to consider conveyance of certain city-owned real estate. T is setting March 19 as the date of public hearing on the proposed vacation of utility easements. U is setting March 19 as the date of public hearing on the proposed vacation dedication of utility easements. V is resolution setting March 19 as the date of public hearing on a proposed vacation and conveyance of a portion of Dallas Drive. W is setting March 19 as the date of public hearing, proposed amendments to consolidated plan, and FY 15 through 19 consolidated plan for the CDBG and home programs. And X is a resolution setting March 19 as the date of public hearing for the proposed adoption by reference of the 2017 addition of the National Electrical Code. Is there a motion to approve the resolution calendar?
So moved.
Motion second, any further discussion from council? Roll call vote, please.
Aye.
Thank you.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Item 3 is a passed ordinance amending Chapter 6 of the Code of Ordinances relative to butchering and disposal of dead animals upon its first consideration. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion second, any further discussion from council? Requires roll call vote, please.
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item 4 is passed ordinance amending Chapter 26 of the Code of Ordinances relative to prohibitive parking on the Vine Street cul-de-sac upon its first consideration. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the rules and move to the third reading, understanding that staff has notified all of the residents surrounding this cul-de-sac and move this along.
Very good. Are we in order there, Mr. Rogers, or do we need to put it up as an amendment?
We can move forward, but technically, we're gonna have the second and third readings instead of just passing forward to the ordinance. So there'd be second and third readings this evening and passing without further discussion.
I guess I'm still not clear.
Me neither.
Yes, oh, I'm sorry. The question was suspending the rules, and that requires a three-quarters vote.
And we're in order having it now, not as it's on the table, the original, or the initial motion, or the, sorry, the initial ordinance?
Right, yes.
Okay, very good. It has been motioned by Councilman Miller to suspend the rules, to not have three readings, but to pass it tonight, have one reading, and have it pass or fail with a supermajority. Is that right, Mr. Rogers?
Right, to consider the second and third readings tonight.
There's a motion.
Question for Councilman Miller, have you talked to everybody that's affected by this?
I haven't individually, no.
Okay.
But I believe Mr. Sturch sent a letter to all regarding the last committee meeting that we had where this was being proposed, so I would safely assume they are all aware that this is on the table.
Yeah, I guess I have problems with the word "assume."
I hear you, Dave.
There is still a motion? I'm not hearing a second.
Second.
That does then consider motion and second. Any further discussion from council? Requires a roll call vote, please.
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item 4 is passed ordinance amending Chapter 26 of the Code of Ordinances relative to prohibitive parking on the Vine Street cul-de-sac upon its first consideration. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the rules and move to the third reading, understanding that staff has notified all of the residents surrounding this cul-de-sac and move this along.
Very good. Are we in order there, Mr. Rogers, or do we need to put it up as an amendment?
We can move forward, but technically, we're gonna have the second and third readings instead of just passing forward to the ordinance. So there'd be second and third readings this evening and passing without further discussion.
I guess I'm still not clear.
Me neither.
Yes, oh, I'm sorry. The question was suspending the rules, and that requires a three-quarters vote.
And we're in order having it now, not as it's on the table, the original, or the initial motion, or the, sorry, the initial ordinance?
Right, yes.
Okay, very good. It has been motioned by Councilman Miller to suspend the rules, to not have three readings, but to pass it tonight, have one reading, and have it pass or fail with a supermajority. Is that right, Mr. Rogers?
Right, to consider the second and third readings tonight.
There's a motion.
Question for Councilman Miller, have you talked to everybody that's affected by this?
I haven't individually, no.
Okay.
But I believe Mr. Sturch sent a letter to all regarding the last committee meeting that we had where this was being proposed, so I would safely assume they are all aware that this is on the table.
Yeah, I guess I have problems with the word "assume."
I hear you, Dave.
There is still a motion? I'm not hearing a second.
Second.
That does then consider motion and second. Any further discussion from council? Requires a roll call vote, please.
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
It does pass, and now we do a motion to approve? Motion to approve the ordinance amending Chapter 26 for parking on Vine Street cul-de-sac. Is there a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Motion second, any further discussion from council? Requires a roll call vote, please.
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for that, council. Item H, is there a motion to allow bills and payroll?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, and requires a roll call vote, please.
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item I is city council referrals. Does council have any items up for referral this evening? Hearing and seeing none, moving to item J, city council updates. Does council have any updates this evening? Again, hearing and seeing none. Item K is a public forum. Speakers will have one opportunity to speak for up to five minutes on topics germane to city business. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to speak for this evening? I see one, couple. Come on up if you'd like, Mr. Fairbanks, I'll call you first. Provide your name and address if you don't mind.
Craig Fairbanks, 405 Spruce Hills Drive. We've kind of been through the wringer, my neighbors, on the QuickStar project, the Casey's project, many other projects. Since day one, 10 or 15 years, we've had a number of projects come up that have not been approved. I've seen a lot of projects on this stretch of Green Hill Road that have been rejected. They don't even get to the council, they are ended at planning and zoning. This corridor was agreed upon that this is not the type of business that would go here. And I understand that. I have a situation where I should have been allowed to have a convenience store, but for the betterment, we restricted that. There's no reason not to continue to leave that restricted. We have enough convenience stores. Casey's chose not to go through with their plan and did the right thing and moved to a better location. There's no reason to put this in this location. These people build homes, expensive homes, expecting that that would not be there, including my own. And I'm sure the people in the neighborhood certainly get tired of having to come down here and fight. It doesn't make any sense to me. We have an entrance to Pinnacle Prairie that is residential in nature. This is the kind of presence we sent. This was not what the developers originally in the Oster Group had planned for that location. I don't know how many of you remember back in the '70s when convenience stores were, first came out, they thought they had one every corner, and then they quickly folded, and we spent years trying to figure out what was gonna go in their place. Now, both of these companies, more Casey's in general, have been up for sale. Who knows if some buyer comes in and buys those and chooses to pull out the amenities and chooses to shut down because they're not doing enough business, where will that leave us? Does that leave us with a good asset or a bad one? So I just ask you to consider that, consider the citizens. It probably meets zoning, I will admit to that, but maybe it's something that we should encourage them to be a good neighbor and not do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fairbanks. Ms. Pop?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Penny Pop. I live at 4805 South Main Street here in Cedar Falls. I'm speaking on behalf of all who have signed the petitions opposing the QuickStar project from South Main, Eldorado Heights, and now the surrounding neighborhoods north of Green Hill. Let me paint you a picture of this neighborhood for you by using the intersection of Green Hill and Main as a starting point. North of Green Hill, directly across from the proposed lot, is a well-established residential area with a multitude of single-family homes. West of the lot, along South Main Street, is also a well-established residential area, Eldorado Heights. And then, of course, we have South Main Street. Everybody knows what's there. The southeast portion is now anchored by Fairway and a scattering of professional buildings. Construction in the area begins at 7:00 a.m. and ends at 5:00 p.m. throughout all of these developments. Walkers emerge as the sun rises. As the sun sets, the trails clear. Traffic converges on this area at rush hour as everyone makes the trek to and from work. The streets are clean, and the yards are kept. When the doors are open in the summer and the wind is from the north, you can hear the faint whistle of the train as it toots its horn from the north end of town. And by nightfall, each and every day, the neighborhood welcomes the darkness and the quiet as we settle in for the night. Now, this might sound idyllic, but for the residents surrounding Green Hill and Main, it is a reality and a well-kept secret. We have no businesses in our immediate area that are open 24/7, nor do we have the need. Even Fairway knows it's time to rest our heads when the sun goes down. As for that gallon of milk, we walked to Fairway and we enjoyed the glorious sunset on the way home. Maybe that's why this neighborhood is so desirable. Little noise, no pollution, little crime. Little noise, no pollution, little crime. The residents of this neighborhood are fighting to preserve the characteristics of this special area. Pride of place and pride of ownership has occurred. As our elected officials, we urge you to vote no on the proposal of QuickStar. We want our voices heard, and you are the vehicle in which we are allowed to use. We have met our obligation, pride of place, pride of ownership. We have created and achieved a unique area within this city of Cedar Falls. We welcome businesses that fit into the style of the neighborhood. More offices, professional outposts, or maybe even a pharmacy, but not a 24/7. This is what we bring to the table. What has QuickStar brought to the table? A business that will operate 24/7. Noise, 24/7. Lights, 24/7. Crime, 24/7. Does that fit in to the characteristic and style of our neighborhood? We think not. Please vote no to preserve our quality of life and preserve the health, safety, and welfare of our community. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Pop. Anyone else for public comment this evening? Hearing and seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to talk a public forum for just a minute. If that's legal.
Well, usually updates are good there, but I'll certainly open the floor up to you, Councilman.
Last council meeting, I brought up a problem we're having with some people that park trailers permanently on the road. And I told people to give me a call if they had that problem. I had two people living in residential areas that said they have that problem. One of them's gonna take a little time to get to because it's more of a summer thing. The other one has been parking the trailer in front of his house forever. We've marked that trailer twice. The most recent marking, first time he moved it, put it right back in the same spot. The second time, he says, "I'll keep moving it as long as I have to." He's making that as permanent spot for parking his trailer 24/7. I've asked our police department to keep after it and keep marking it. I wish that at last council, when our attorney brought up an ordinance change, that would have stopped this 24-hour, seven-day-a-week parking, it got defeated by council. So now, I'm gonna ask them to continue marking and keep track of the time and hours that our police department have to spend. And guess what? They're gonna have to go out there every two days and mark it, and every two days to see if it's moved. It's about a half hour per event. And we'll keep after it. That's what I'm requesting of our police department. I think if a person was a good neighbor, they'd understand that parking it out there for a short period of time is okay, and the ordinance that we drew up said that. If you're a contractor, you can park your trailer there for as long as it takes you to complete your contracting. If you have your boat out there and you're gonna clean it out, that's okay, but no parking overnight. People don't like trailers parked in the residential areas. And there's only a few of them, but there's only a few people that think they own the road. So I'm gonna keep after it, as little a project as it is, because I think all of our citizens are our business, and I'm gonna keep representing them. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? We are adjourned, thank you.